Meeting of the April Work Session of the Indiana Borough Council to order. And we do have items to vote on tonight, so would you call the roll, please?
Yeah.
During the public comment period, people are invited to speak to the council. You are limited to three minutes. You come to the podium, state your name and address, and then say whatever is on your mind.
My name's Angela Don Giovanni and I live at 559 Oak Street. I wanted to talk today about pride. Pride is about confidence and self-respect. So how can we expect any person who identifies as LGBTQ plus to feel pride when individuals in our own community turn a blind eye to who they really are and force them to make a horrible choice? Either be who you are in the light of day, but feel as though you have a target on your back or to hide yourself and remain living your life in the dark. Recognizing diversity is key to our community's collective success. Sexual orientation, gender origin, and gender identity all play an important part in our own individual lives, and they play an important role in adding to diverse perspectives that improve our community as a whole. I would like to see Indiana Borough commemorate Pride Month by raising the rainbow flag and in turn raising the confidence, self-respect, and aiding in the healing of the LGBTQ plus community. I'd like to leave you all with these final words. I'm proud to be an American, where at least I know I'm free because the flag still stands for freedom and they can't take that away from me. Please help us make these words true for all individuals in our community, ensuring that pride isn't just for certain people, but rather for all people. Thank you.
Who would like to address this?
Hi, my name is Ashley Wolf. I live at 716 Water Street, right over there. And I am here because I just had a little bit that I wanted to say about the Pride Festival. So in case anyone forgot, there is this thing we have called the First Amendment of the United, the First Amendment of the Constitution, which clearly states that we have freedom of religion in this country. And freedom of religion also means freedom from religion. There are nearly eight billion other people on this earth and not a single one of them are obligated to act or dress how you want them to. You don't get to dictate what everyone else is doing with their lives based on your personal religious beliefs. If your argument is that you don't want a drag show on Philadelphia Street because you don't want yourself or your children to see, to see it, well, guess what? I see things every single day that, all day, that I do not agree with, but yet I have no right to tell somebody else how to live their life as long as they aren't hurting anyone or hurting anyone's property. As long as that's, as long as they're not doing that, I move on with my life. I was born in this town. I was born at IRMC Hospital and I've lived here my whole life and I want this event. My friends want this event. I have had so many calls, text messages, and emails from community members, businesses, and even the state police asking how they can help. I don't think everyone in the crowd realizes just how much harm it would cause for the drag show to not take place. And I think some people want to deny the fact that LGBTQ plus people even exist in this town. Well, we are here. We are your friends. We are your children. We are your fellow community members and we have just as much right to exist in public as you do. And we are done hiding ourselves to make you more comfortable whenever we have never felt comfortable. And that's what this is all about and we won't stop fighting. Thank you.
If anyone is unclear on this, this event has been approved. And it's not, it's not up for discussion.
Of us up here tonight was because we heard there might be opposition and that there might be an appeal filed, so that's why we are here tonight.
Why are you laughing, Jessica?
I was wondering the exact same thing.
You think it's not funny?
His comment about it's happening tonight, I was in a crance, that this event is happening in June. And I was wondering the same question. There's no laughter coming from him. Thank you.
Poom, you've laughed many times, you've laughed many times.
But there, there was no laughter. I was completely silent. This event is happening, it's been voted for, and we are happy that everyone is going to be happy with this event.
I need to address that I was called at 10:30 last week by Poom.
But we're still in public comment.
This is kind of, this is kind of public.
No, no, no.
Neither is what you said.
Thanks, Luke, for your support.
Hello, I'm Pat. I've been up here before, but today I'm coming up as an individual member of the community, not anyone affiliated with the outhouse, but as nothing more than, as I've said before, your neighbor. Many people recently have asked, where has this group come from? And I just wanted to reiterate that we come from here and we've grown up here our whole lives. Recently, we have had religion and personal morals being used against us and being used to belittle and try to rid an entire community that is realistically more tangible than any personal belief. And I say this as a practicing Christian myself. I have over half a decade as a member of the Forest Hills Church. I have some quotes I wanted to read tonight as well. Um, my partner, Ama, who she says, and I want to let this be known that I stand beside her quote, "Legally, we have done all that is required for a permit and spoke before council twice. If our permit is rescinded, it would be done with disregard to current laws, including those protecting against discrimination. I do hope that the council will uphold their oaths and laws, which all citizens within our nation must abide by." And I want to personally add to that, that no personal set of morals, true or false, outweigh the Constitution of our country. We have a right to be here. And on behalf of religion, I do want to say this quote. "There is neither Jew nor Gentile, neither slave nor free, nor is there male or female, for all of you are one in Jesus Christ." And also I want to, with the little debacle that just happened here, I want to urge all of you to please continue to work together. Like I said before, this is not our side versus their side. This is all of us. We are more than willing to continue working with y'all. Like we've worked with Mr. Advisor here. He had asked us to put content ratings on our events and we are more than open to that. And not only, Mr. Advisor, are we going to do that for you, but we're going to do that for all events from here on out. And if anyone else has any concerns, we're more than willing to work with y'all on that too. But like I have said up until now, we have all, we have done all that is required and gone through all of the loopholes and we've done more than that in some regards. And regardless, we are going to be having the event on June 10th. And I just want to address the concerns of safety up until now, even the people speaking in opposition to the event. Their concerns were not from safety. Are, we have no ill intent, intentions towards anyone, nothing violent, nothing harmful, nothing slanderous, nothing at all. We want to promote nothing but community, not only with our community, but all of our community. And with saying that, I just want to say, you know, the event will be going on and I do want to personally invite, you know, our words can only go so far. Please allow us the freedom in this space of showing y'all with actions that we will stick to our word and drag like any other art form, such as movies or plays or anything like that, can be adjusted as per the audience and the ratings can be, you know, E for everyone, rated R, PG 13, whatever. We are all adults and we can adjust that and we're going to adjust it so it will be rated E for everyone and everything will be family friendly. I just wanted to touch on that again. And I also want to say, please fly the flag. Thank you.
Letters, but I wanted to wait until everyone was done.
Name is Josh Philp. I'm a resident Indiana County. I live in Pendron. I do business here in Indiana in the borough. I'm also a local preacher. I spoke to.
You have to state your address.
Give my address for safety reasons. I do business in Indiana and I'm a local preacher in the area within the borough.
Writing and hand it to the secretary.
It afterwards, if that's something you would need, that's, I have no problem with that.
If the address is there.
So that our secretary has it with the minutes. Sorry, this is a public meeting and we don't have secrets in here.
We have had other people stand up without giving their address in the past.
Oversight.
Your address, Jessica. That's part of the requirement of speaking. Casey, I can hear him. Why aren't you charging Case? Well, she's the one who's speaking before I was. And so was Jessica. Well, apparently it is.
As long as your address is in the secretary.
So this is addressing the, the event for June 10th as planned, that has already been spoke about. I am part of the people that are speaking opposition for safety of the community. This is not a First Amendment issue. There are wording in the First Amendment and there are wordings for such things like this. Obscenities and safety of minors is in the First Amendment. This organization identifies itself sexually, everything with every single letter in it. And I will state from their own website and what they shared about this particular event going on. This would be a family-friendly event and all are welcome. Our goal being to provide the most visibility and opportunities as possible to local members of the LGBTQIA+ community. As always, we are a community of pride, taking pride in our community, and we absolutely cannot wait to share this day with you and every year after. You said that I need to give you evidence. I was here last night. So the evidence is, is they are part of the pride and LGBTQ community. They have, in their own wording, has said this. For the past few years, there has been thousands of these gatherings. I have yet to find one that has not had sexual oriented gestures and things of that nature that are present within them. And I will even go further to read a justice opinion from Brennan that specified what obscenity is and what, what these things mean. The dominant theme of a material taken as a whole appeals to a pertinent interest in sex. The material is patently offensive because it affronts contemporary community standards relating to description or representation of sexual matters. The material is utterly without redeeming social value. You said, where have they else done these things publicly? They did it IUP. It's on, you could see, you could see the recordings. It is sexually explicit. They are, it is designed to look sexual, everything about it. My goal here is not to attack these people. I, I'm not here to do that. I am here to identify what they are identifying themselves as. We need to identify them as what they are saying. They are sexually identifying themselves as a sexually identified organization. And that is how they perform. That is what they do. And that's fine. Everybody has the right to do it, but there is a place for that. We have restrictions in this borough. You all upheld a oath to uphold what this borough has put in place for what is allowed and what is not allowed for sexually explicit material and how it is handled publicly or privately. You have all sworn an oath to uphold those things and I hope that you will. May God bless you and may his will be done on this board. Thank you.
Community, they asked me to read it. They could not be here tonight. And I called Peter. Thought it'd be appropriate to read it during public comment. The Indiana Borough Council, my name is Mel Massengale. In 2014, my family and I moved to Indiana and have been residents of the borough ever since. I also pastor the Summit Church, where we care a great deal about Indiana and we're hard to make a community better for everyone who lives here. I'm writing to voice my concern over the recent developments regarding a potentially family-friendly drag show at IRMC Park. One of our greatest responsibilities as a community is protect those who are vulnerable. The most vulnerable in our communities are our children. I don't believe the intentions of those advocating for this event to be nefarious, but I do believe that there, there will be real consequences for allowing this event in such a public place. I'm a firm advocate of the First Amendment, but I believe the First Amendment has limitations when it pertains to public decency and obscenity, especially when minors are involved. If this event were held at a bar, I would have no objections, but because of how public the event will be, people will be impacted negatively. I believe that pedestrians, including children with no interest or knowledge of this event, will be subject to the performances. As I shared with a council member last week, if they were screening a movie with a PG 13 or R-rated or R-rating at IRMC Park, I would have these same concerns. And although the organizers have made promises about what will be presented, that is not always in their control because the performers will have the final say. Again, my greatest concern is the safety of the kids in our community. Adults have the agency to do as they wish and I don't want to force my convictions upon others. With that said, we have a responsibility to make sure that family and children in our community are safe from being sexualized or having an overt sexual message forced upon them. I don't normally weigh in on events like this, but I feel strongly that the safety and protection of our children is worth it. I would like you to consider, to reconsider this event at IRMC Park and consider another more private venue for this event that would offer more safety for the participants, pedestrians, and possibly reduce the cost for security to the borough police. Thank you for your time and consideration, Mel Massengale. Mel is a, I mean, he's kind of said it, but he is a resident of the borough. I can't remember his exact address, but he doesn't say what it is on here. Can't remember the exact. I have another letter from another resident of the borough. Kind of agree with him. It's shorter.
It's a three-minute public comment.
To the Indiana Borough Council, as a resident taxpayer who works here in Indiana Borough, I'm writing to express my concern for a planned and advertised entertainment event to be held at IRMC Park on June 10th, 2023. My specific concern is with the entertainment that has been promoted to take place at the event. While the event organizers advertise family-friendly entertainment, my question is who defines, whose definition of family-friendly are we using as a standard? A quick visit to social media accounts of the organizing, of those organizing the events raise legitimate concerns as to the organizers appear to often promote and lead events that are not advertised as family-friendly. I believe a fair question is asked, is who in the borough is taking responsibility to make sure that this event is being held, sorry, to make sure that this event being held on public property within the borough will truly be family-friendly and will not include adult entertainment. Thank you for taking the time to allow me to address my concerns in this letter. I believe I share a common desire with many others in the community that any and all events held in IRMC Park be those with truly family-friendly entertainment. Thank you. Benjamin Blowers, 31 South 12th Street, Indiana, Pennsylvania. Public comment. So this is a letter from Jonathan Warnock, former council member, Alexander Clark, both of 1199 Water Street. Good evening, council. I am disappointed to hear that council will be discussing a ban on drag shows. Council should cease all activity related to this discussion immediately for the following reasons. It is clear, it's a clear violation of the First Amendment. Borough Council has declared public support for the LGBTQIA+ community. Chief Shaw has publicly declared support for the LGBTQIA+ community. Borough Council has voiced their desire for a fruitful partnership with IUP. IUP has a drag club. Drag has raised millions of dollars for fire departments and libraries across western Pennsylvania. Drag has always been performed here, but this discussion comes when it's, it's popular on the news. Please discontinue these efforts, signed Jonathan and Alexander.
Identifies with what has already been discussed as far as concerns as the, the pride event is exciting. The drag portion hopefully could be, if not G-rated, be private. So I'm not going to go into it. This was Marv Nelson. He's a pastor of a local church. So I just wanted to address that it is here and I will commit it.
My name is Eli Dennis. 94 Colonial Drive down Billy Street. I spent most of my time up in Indiana. Closed doors. I run security for them. We make sure that, that. Are of age. Bring up are drag brunches where the drag queens are just servers. It's showing a visual of a type of people. In the community rather than hiding them away from a community. Because of a certain. Let's say it's bad. Having a group that is, is in our community hidden away. How does that, that help? Young people that feel maybe they want to. The event. Doesn't say that everyone has to show up. If you don't like the event, you don't need to show up. We have advertised to say this is going to happen on June 10th. We are not trying to be private about there being a drag event.
Thank you.
Be her. I live at 1354 Trim Tree Road. That's in the, I, I, my husband works in the borough. And with regard to the First Amendment and Brennan, Brennan was actually extremely critical of limiting the rights of people to express themselves. I think we should give a little credit to the organizers who have told us this is a family-friendly event. So I think we understand that a family-friendly event is not going to have highly sexualized content. And if it does, the organizers are going to be shut down or not allowed to have this event in future. Now, I don't know about you, but I don't go anywhere near downtown during IUP patties, right? People get killed. Students get killed at that event. They die, there are suicides, right? There is harm that happens in our community that has nothing to do with, uh, you have a wedding band on. This person, I'm just going to call you, I, I'm assuming this person probably has a sex life because they have an intimate partner. That has nothing to do with what I'm wearing. I can, you know, how I express myself. So let's not conflate people, men or women, gay, trans, or straight, dressing up as we do on Halloween and for costume events as something nefarious. Also, if we're concerned, let's be clear about who perpetuates crimes against children. Statistically, it is cis white men. If we're going to be concerned about children, let's look at the statistics national and in Pennsylvania about the 60% of crimes that are perpetrated against others are people that we know and typically cis white men. I don't think drag queens are the concern. I think a family-friendly event where we get to engage maybe with difference is a wonderful thing for our community. Also, hold the event or not, our drag brothers and sisters, our LGBTQIA brothers and sisters live, work, pay taxes in our community. So you can try to hide them away, but it's not obscene. Obscenity is lewd, explicit, filthy pictures or words. There is nothing lewd or filthy about somebody with some fly makeup, hair, and glitter. I'm sorry, it's a costume. Keep it in its place. It's a costume. Family-friendly event where people are going to wear costumes. Thank you.
655 Plum Street, Indiana, PA. Here to speak because, well, I had to drag my sick kiddo here who's sitting there, poor kid, because apparently we are going to talk about people wearing dresses and if that's okay or not. And we're going to try and limit their free speech. We are going to try and limit the LGBTQ community in here. We're going to try and limit diversity. As a trans human with a trans daughter, I am upset that this is even a discussion. Okay? People want to come from religious backgrounds to say things and that's fine. Don't come. It's already been stated, don't come then. If you don't agree with it, don't come. You folks though, you like to talk about money. Borough Council, you want Indiana to thrive. You want to see it to thrive? Accept diversity. Bring it, people. You're going to do so by collaborating with IUP and other diverse groups. What you're doing is trying to stifle them. If you want to be a town that is eventually going to be a ghost town, then keep going down the road where you want to go against pride and people speaking up and just wanting to be themselves. Me and my child just want to live. We just want to be ourselves at home currently. We want to be on the couch, snuggled up, probably watching a movie, just like any other family because currently we're dealing with a virus. So definitely we'll spray down on my soul. Okay? That's all. We're just typical normal people. And every once in a while, we want to celebrate because the reason that people want to celebrate this is because we are attacked throughout the, you've seen, I've seen the Florida Bills. That is not what Indiana should be. Indiana should be a safe space for everyone, safe for everybody. We shouldn't be picking and choosing. It's not a cherry pick fest. It should be safe for everybody. My seven-year-old should not be attacked by adults. It's ridiculous. So I would encourage you to keep that in mind. If the group says it's going to be family-friendly, it's going to be family-friendly. And if not, as said, then you put consequences for it. Otherwise, there shouldn't even be a discussion. It's already been passed. For coming up here and as somebody already mentioned, cis white males are your typical targets of sexual. It isn't even sexual. Y'all, look up sex and look up gender. Google it.
Thank you.
We haven't met yet.
Have anything to bring to us tonight?
Very little. We did discuss the sidewalk program and finalized some last minute details. And Nicole is going to be talking more about that in her report and when the letters will go out. We're using some of that ARP money to fix some sidewalks finally. So Nicole is going to tell you more about that when she's up. And other than that, it can wait for the next.
So last year, there was some discussion about flag. Have you guys brought that up again?
We did, we did.
Discuss the flag policy.
Pride flags or pride for June as a borough. We'd have to probably make that decision sooner rather than later. It's in June, but we won't meet again until the beginning of June.
The the flag policy that is still a draft, we felt that it wasn't ready to roll out. So we feel like it's going to be ready for the June sixth nineteenth work session. So we'll vote on it and pass this with community development the day before. And then it'll be ready. So other than that.
Get a pat. Yeah, absolutely. Yes.
Once instructed, I would love to see it.
So he'll see it, but he will see it before our next meeting. At the next community development.
Yeah, we have a venue. We have two motions I need to go through and they have not been before committee. So I'll need a second. Oh, sorry, the first one. The chief just pointed out the first one I'm going to do has been through committee. And that's consistent with police department visioning made possible by funding, a funding agreement with the Indiana area school district to support this area school district plus the Borough Police Department partnership. A recommendation has been made to extend a conditional offer of employment to eligible civil service candidate, Jeremy Adamson, with a tentative hire date being honored before July first, twenty twenty-three. Initial employment will be contingent upon successful pre-employment screenings and related pre-employment requirements to achieve MPO ETC certification as a member of the Indiana Borough Police Department. I move to extend a conditional offer of employment. This is the motion to Jeremy Adamson for a position of police officer with a tentative hire date honored before July first, twenty twenty-three, contingent upon successful pre-employment requirements.
And that's from the committee?
That's from the committee. Yeah. Thanks, chief. No.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, name, motion carries.
Okay, and this one didn't get to our committee in time. Community options incorporated in the Ark of Indiana County requesting the closure of RMC Park on Thursday, June fifteenth from ten AM to three PM for a community inclusion revolution awareness event described as consisting of nonprofit and other agencies working with individuals with disabilities to increase community inclusion and awareness. The motion is to move to approve the closure of RMC Park at the request of Community Options, Inc. and the Ark of Indiana County on Thursday, June fifteenth from ten AM to three PM. Okay.
Moved in seconded?
Mr. President, just to just to break forward a little bit about the event. The one of the event sponsors is the Ark of Indiana, which is a disabilities awareness work group. Michelle Jordan, who is a partner, a strong partner of the police department, is here if there are questions. But just to advise council, she provided a list of probable vendors. And they consist of the Community Guidance Center, ICAP, Children's Advisory Commission, the Care Center, Office of Vocational Rehab, Indiana County Department of Human Services, Aaron IU, Justice Works, Hope Awards, Center for Independent Living, South Central PA, Community Guidance Center, Alliance for Nonprofit Resources. Right? So, well, no, that's a that's a list of probable. The Indiana Borough Police Department is also listed, but we haven't yet been asked or organized. But it looks appears like they're going to invite the state police and the sheriff's department as well. So it couldn't go through committee in the time that the event was hoping to get approval from. So I had explained to Michelle that it would be beneficial if council had any questions. Only if only if council asks a question.
It happens to be the third Thursday of June. Is it going to conflict with the third Thursday? It ends at three and it starts at?
Thursday starts five to seven.
They start at five.
Right.
So if it ends at three and opens at five, is that enough time to?
That's two hours.
I think they pretty much did it on purpose for that Thursday. So that was, the street's going to be closed anyways, so we're going to have to close it at two, close it at ten.
To bring about a little bit more community awareness with the group homes and our residents. There have been some incidents lately with with neighbors with the group homes in the area. And so, you know, we're trying to get the community aware of of what group homes do. You know, who they provide services for, but also the other ID providers in the area. I think that the community at large really doesn't know what we all do here and how hard we work to have individuals not institutionalized anymore. That's the number one goal, right? Is to have them at home based in the community. Polk just closed the institution Polk. So, you know, research shows that they live their best lives in the community. But there has been some pushback in the community with, you know, having them home based in the community. So so this is to open up to the to the community and just, you know, talk about what we do and what we do best and how it, you know, it betters lives. So and it betters lives for everybody. So, you know, your best friends with someone with a disability, you're going to know it because you have joined your life. So anyways, so that's that's why we're doing this community event. So thank you.
Brilliant vote.
Aye.
Post name? Other questions for public safety?
So we have not met, but this did come up in between meetings and has been on our agenda. It has to do with our parks department, our slowly building parks department has been looking for a place of physical building and an opportunity has arisen for us to find a building, a current current building that also includes the green space. And due to, I'm getting up to speed, so Kyle or Nicole, if I screw this up, let me know. I believe it was from the genius of Kyle, found some a source of funding for a building just like this that requires a green space. You can read, read about it there. Particularly the property we're looking at is sort of perfect for that. It has a building that is perfectly usable for our parks department and also an entire open lot currently. It's not giant. It will be a parklet, but a lot like you see a lot of other parks buildings around the world, around the country. I look at parks buildings, you guys probably do too. They often have a little park around them because that's how these things get funded. So that's what this is. This will allow us to apply for the grant, is my understanding. And that will open up, I think the property acquisition is lined up and should be able to move over the next six months or so.
This is a motion?
The motion to allow us to apply for this grant.
Like we're going to apply for the grant. Part of the grant process is having a resolution in place. So we just need to have a resolution. We'll we'll move forward with the other parts of the grant, but this is a step to the grant.
Motion spelled out in your packet.
Because there wasn't space previously loaded, which I believe got some negative pushback. Is that correct?
Everything gets denied. You have two spaces that both got before.
Okay. And so, okay, that's what I was going to ask. Has this one already been vetted? Maybe a good chance for this really happening? So the grant comes through and we apologize. At what stage of the we want to build here are we at?
Building there.
Sure. Okay. I didn't know, because you do all this and then they say no. I think I don't know who that is even, but.
It has been on here and we have batted around a number of ideas. And this is, and the other ones have been building, building in a couple of different places and they've been denied. And then we didn't own the property. And so we opened up this and well, is there a current building that would suffice?
Or does this building deed into required green space? I don't even know. That's a thing.
Recreation program.
Would make it, the reason it would have to have a park is because of the grant. Is that correct? I, because I didn't, yeah, anyway, okay.
So I think just it's a friendly, like revision, just to make it geographically correct. In the in the first, the first whereas. It's, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's minor.
In second, moved in seconded. Reproved this resolution. Or corrected.
South, whatever, what was it? One grant, the liquid, the one, the one we just got, local share account. That was in the eastern side. So Ben is correct and we'll revise eastern through western or maybe just get rid of it all. So we don't have this problem in the future.
Yeah, I was super excited. I thought I got the street from my house and I realized I was wrong.
If it got us funded last time, I was like, I'm doing it again.
Well, easterly was a word, but not easterly.
So we'll, we'll, we'll make that edit and Peter will sign the mission.
This resolution.
No.
Approving this resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post name, motion carries. Does Shade Tree have anything?
No.
Okay, well.
Want to spend a some time talking about the American Rescue Plan. I know we brought that up to committees multiple times and I just want to, it's in your packet, just kind of review. We have been spending some of the funds and Kyle, we did an up to date spreadsheet here. Again, the borough building has been ongoing. They've been in here, they just were here Monday reviewing some of the, we're about eighty percent complete on the design work. So we're about six months out from bidding anything for construction wise. And we're still working on some funding for the the whole project in general. But I do want to bring up on the American Rescue Plan again. The obligation to commit the money was for December thirty first of twenty twenty-four. So we're we're good on that. We, most of the funds are early obligated to some, I think we're adjusting some funding around. But again, then just to put out another date, it's by the December thirty first of twenty twenty-six is when, you know, it should be, the money should be spent by. So we want to keep that in mind because it does come up fast. As you see here, the economic development, not much has been started, but the good news is we are making some progress there. I'm excited that we have two garages, two blatant properties that we have just worked with Pat, the planner and the code office finally agreed. They they made contact with the owner and those blatant garages will be coming down. So we're going to be using some of that ARP funding towards getting some of these blatant properties cleared up and down. And another big thing is the the sidewalk program. We've been discussing it a lot at community development. And we finally, at the end of the week, will be sending out letters, will be. Kyle is going to be doing a post. We are going to provide a sidewalk program for our residents for sidewalk repair and and total repair and maintenance of the sidewalk. So it will help with people who need to get their sidewalks. According to up, brought up to code, we'll have the funding available to help assist with that program. So I'm looking forward to that. Again, it's going to be similar to how the Shade Tree runs their tree program with the assistance. But I think this sidewalk program, I I know we put it off for a while, but I'm excited. We're finally getting there and the code department did a assessment of the active transportation area that we had the active transportation plan done and they kind of assisted that area and did a layout of what sidewalks needed fixed and repaired. And so we have a good start of where to contact the the residents and make sure that they know this funding is available and we'll get started on that. And other than that, I'm excited for Trajan to give his presentation here. And that's it for now. Okay.
Point out, could, yes, they set the extra stations, but anyone in the borough can apply and receive assistance doing this. So the targeted area is the active transportation. Pat, I don't know, I just went blank. I'm sorry.
Half made, yeah. Yes.
First plan is the starting point that anyone can apply.
Looking at the plan, what I've been hearing on the news is that the Republican House plan to raise the debt limit would involve clawing back any money that has not been obligated by municipalities. And so I'm wondering, I'm not sure what does obligated mean in this connection? And if this money is not all obligated by June the first, which is supposed to be the drop dead date, would we lose all of that three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the projects that are not started?
I don't believe so, no. The what we've read and what Kyle has, it's we have to, we provided a report, the first report was due. It's, we have it obligated to a project and I believe we'll fulfill those projects. We.
The, is that is probably since that's federal, that you're talking to federal house? Yeah, so that's probably the federal money gets, it's going to get to states in a very similar way. Obligated, expended money. But I think as long as our state has already obligated the funds, that is not eligible to be clawed back, which they have because we have already received all of our funds and they have all the lists and everything. So I don't think, you know, I don't think that applies.
So as long as we actually have our pause, it's not going back.
Back, even if they ask. Not giving it back.
That's the motion to accept the budget. So we we obligate, whatever we can do aside from like holding on to it. We did, we, yeah.
On what they were even required. We we have a budget. We put it in a, yeah, it's a separate fund. It's, we have its own budget for it. We we kind of, we have more paperwork than I think we need to provide to them.
There is doing in the library on Monday with the mechanical engineers and.
Missing that, the HVAC system, that's what's part of, that's what's on here, the community center on here. They're finally moving forward with that. It's on the, it's part of this American Rescue Fund under Community Center. But they're finally getting that started. It took a while. A hundred and sixty, that's what I think it's on here. Yeah.
Is it and not use it for this building?
That's still up, that's still part of the, what the engineers and that are looking at if we can, if it can be used over here. Final decision on that has not been made yet.
What was going on on Monday when we were in the building?
Pre-construction, a pre-construction meeting over there on Monday. I believe that's probably what you saw.
Other questions for Nicole?
No, I just wanted to comment. I think we've had this money for about a year and it's a lot of money to get all at once. And I think, I think as Nicole, we've done a great job of spending it, right? Spending it honestly and accurately. Like, like, we went through, this borough went through a big, long process to get community input. And, you know, I said, it's like, it's a lot of, it's a lot of capital to just bring in for organization. And it's like sixteen percent of our budget, it's something to absorb and spend responsibly. And so I just wanted to comment, I think you seem to be doing a fantastic job, like you're managing this, this lot of money.
I diverse, I mean, you know, we, to DI to.
Thing that'd be like, spend it everywhere rather than a lot of municipalities, like we're just going to focus this on one thing. It's been a lot easier for you.
No, the county, they're fixing their building with all their. So, yeah.
Where, which is a lot more programming. So I appreciate the amount of work that's gone through and it's.
Anything else, Nicole?
President, thank you. Counsel, thank you for your support, your continued support of our partnership with.
President, thank you. Um, council, thank you for your support and continued support of our partnership with the school district. It's a, it's a thriving work in progress that, that I'm certain that all of us are going to be very proud of. Not only today, but moving forward in the arena of school safety. And, um, I just want to add that, um, you know, we are in the midst of complex conversations and emotions I recognize are, are very strong. And in some ways this is unfamiliar territory for many, if not all of us. And I just want to reassure every member of council that you have a professional police department and we will take a professional approach to all public safety needs. And we were going to address every partner that we have with sincere goodwill. We are a community police department, so we're going to try to be the best community partner that we could possibly be. And we are also ambassadors for Indiana Borough. That may mean different things at different times, depending on the public safety nature of things. But I just wanted to reiterate that, uh, we are, you, you have a high character and highly skilled police department. And we thrive on your support and on community support. And, uh, your trust is invaluable as we all navigate these very complex conversations. And not that they're complex for everyone, but they are complex certainly for some, but we respect everyone. And that's a statement I'd like to make on behalf of the police department tonight.
I was a few months late. Did we acknowledge police appreciation week?
No. Uh, so this is Peace Officer Memorial Week. And, uh, there's a local law enforcement service that will be tomorrow at eleven AM. Believe it the West Pike Fire Station. It's out on social media. It's a yearly annual event hosted at various locations, uh, or different location every year. So, uh, you know, I am accustomed to thanking our officers almost every day and certainly in every email that I send to them about everything. So certainly a public thank you counselor, another public declaration of my appreciation for their service is certainly warranted.
People to put out blue light bulbs to see how many we can get out there in support of, uh, police and law enforcement. I don't know if you have them, but it's always fun to let them drive by and see their support.
There's a, we get confused with police call markers.
Come on.
I don't really have a report. I haven't done much hanging out to poles today. But I do want to take a moment to embarrass one of our council members who the highest honor that a faculty member at IUP awards. Although that Ben Ford is the new distinguished university professor.
Uh, yes, I have a question. Uh, I spend time walking up and down Philadelphia Street just to see what's happening. And a business popped up the other day, hippie company. About two doors up from that little convenience store on, on Philly Street in the seven hundred block. And it, it got to me to wondering, uh, do we have any coordination as to what's being opened? What companies are showing up? And do we have a liaison person from council that is working with downtown Indiana like we did in the past?
As of the year of any person at the moment, when they reorganized, they disbanded their board of directors, which you appointed me to some time ago.
For that, I can't remember. That was paid back in those days. Yeah.
And I have not received any invitations for the council to send somebody back to that group. So I know Nicole's been meeting with them.
Yeah. And our, he's, he's been coming, he came to community development. Yeah. But he's going to come more.
It's up to, and we're looking forward to future correspondence with him. Finally, yeah, it'd be before last night, we hadn't seen anybody from DI in months. That's good. The last thing, hopefully he returns. Coordination so that we know what's popping up. Free community development meeting from now on.
That good. Cool.
Businesses are.
Play, mayor, they're doing, they're actually doing a, um, a business, um, the, our planning department and code department are actually in the process right now doing a business assessment, working with downtown Indiana.
That's a good, that's, I'm just curious about that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Is there any old business?
Hi, everybody. To you before, but if I haven't, I'm Trajan Jones. I'm your new planning and zoning official for the borough and I'm excited to be here. So I have a little bit of information for you guys about the comprehensive plan that we've been working on for the borough. If you could go to this page in your handouts. What this is, is it outrun, it's an outline of our outreach and engagement plan that we want to, going to be doing, putting on through the rest of the summer and throughout the rest of the process of updating our comprehensive plan. Um, there's a good bit of stuff on here. I think goes down to about, uh, three or four different pages. But the main idea is we're not going to be doing all of this stuff. This is all going to be guided by our steering committee, which I'll talk about in a little bit. But, um, some of these options on here that we've already started include this poster over here for the Indiana twenty thirty. It's going to be kind of like a promotional advertisement thing for, for the plan to get people interested. It's got a QR code on it, which brings people to our engagement website, which you may have seen, but that's another one of these outreach methods that we got started on, which also brings me to another thing that I'll talk about later. Yeah. Okay. Actually, right now. For the good website, to try to get people there a little bit easier, I made up these things. They're called NFC cards. And essentially what it is, it's a virtual business card. And if you take it, if you, oh yeah. If you take it and put it up against your phone or anything with a NFC chip, it'll take us to a link tree. Which will take like directly to.
Terribly organized. Hurts my soul.
They can give their feedback on the comp plan.
Oh, thank you.
Now, if for some reason somebody doesn't have a smartphone or anything.
Yeah, I just help against it.
It's cool, right?
Yeah.
Right now, I don't know if any of you have seen the site yet. It's been up for about three weeks. It's been constantly updating. That's another thing that our steering committee is going to help us with is putting content out there, making it, um, attractive for people. Making it interesting, stuff like that. Um, engagement site.
And they can interact with you directly, right?
But so on this first page here, that's where it's kind of like the landing page shows them welcome. This is what this, uh, website is and then gives a little brief timeline of the project, where we are in it now, where we're planning on going. And then if you go up to the top, Kyle, you go to about.
Hard. That's where it takes you?
Yeah. It'll take you to a link tree. And then it'll take you to the website.
Which women?
Engage Indiana. So then you got about, so this will give people information on what a comp plan is. Obviously not everybody's a planner, not everybody's interested in this. So this will kind of break down what a comp plan is, why it's important, who's leading the project, how it's going to be funded and where they can go for more information back to the top. So outreach and engagement, this is where we're going to be pushing stuff. So we see, we already have some stuff up there. It's so annoying. It always takes forever to load, but there's a hawk walk video from an event we had. And then pictures, this is of students that could, were kind of giving us feedbacks on us what they like about Indiana. And then the other one was from a bike, um, the national bike month that we had over here with, uh, the county. We were able to show, um, people how to put their bikes on the buses so that we can start doing that. I guess kind of just promoting active transportation. And then like I said, that video over there will take you to a recap of the hawk walk for you guys to check that out on, here in time. And then this will be, this is going to be a really important page that the steering committee will help us with. So this, what we have right now is we have questions that people can ask, uh, people that are the project leads on this. So myself, Nicole and our consultant Jeff Rakes. So they can go in there, they can ask questions and then we can give them specific answers to that question. And then on the side there, you see just some simple like poll questions, what brought you here? How long have you lived here? Just stuff to get kind of data, get people thinking about what's going on. Um, the, the next slide, that will be the draft plan. Obviously there's nothing there now, but we do have the chapters. So people can get idea of what we're going to be talking about in this. And then finally planning related documents, that's just past comprehensive plans, the active transportation plans, just extra resources that people can check out if they're interested. Um, lastly, I've got potential steering committees. I would hear about problems that you guys might have to. But the steering committees, like I said, other than the planning commission, the year development, um, and yourselves, these will be the people that have kind of gotten this project and directed us from where we're going to go. Already obviously community development, we've got planning commission. We've got, we've got the student from IP actually came up, he's the planning or the president of the planning student organization. We've got residents, we've got business owners, we've got white township. One of the sections over there that you may not have seen under the draft plan is that, um, planning for interrelationships and that's a big one. Obviously we're surrounded by white township. So we want to have their input. Um, other than that, yeah, we reached out to some that we haven't gotten yet. NAACP and, and the Rep Room Indiana, those are kind of just underrepresented groups that we want to make sure have their voice heard in this process. So the next steps with that is this committee, these people will be brought to the admin committee on May twenty third for them to push it to full council, which you guys would then appoint them on June twentieth for our first meeting on June twenty second. And then from there on, that's when we would get into the bulk of this, we'd finalize that, the, uh, the outreach plan. We'd finalize the website and start getting out into the community, trying to get feedback, holding open houses, just really interacting with the community as much as we can. And that is pretty much all I have for you. I'm sorry. One more time. I reached out to them. I didn't get back. I didn't hear back from them. I know, uh, Sam Kelly, that's one I forgot to mention, but we're going to be working with downtown Indiana. So. And all this stuff too, that I'm saying to you guys, like I said, you guys are just as important in this process as going to be the steering committee, planning commission. So I'm open to all kind of feedback on all of this, on the website, on who you guys would like to see if we missed anybody on the steering committee. Things with the NFC cards. I know Kyle had gave me some great resources we could get on that link tree. We could direct people to programs that we want to do. We could direct, uh, direct them to our social media websites. So there's a lot of fun new stuff going on in the planning department and.
It's on your list of stakeholders. It's on the list.
They probably just didn't respond yet.
Stakeholders, it's already there.
Stakeholders. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So yeah, that'd also be, yeah, people were coming. Now, not all of our stakeholders will be on the steering committee, but those will be the people with the groups that we are trying to reach out to and still collect their feedback.
Well, I'm not a stakeholder.
There are a lot of stuff there at you guys. Is there any questions about anything? Maybe the cards? Those working right for everybody. Sometimes they're a little bit.
Be like, sounds like it's forty.
I said to the younger people. Smartphone.
Yeah.
Right now, we don't have anything planned, but we do have like from the list of stakeholders. And I think there's also a list of potential events on there too. We're always on the lookout. Like I said, the active transportation one, we actually weren't even supposed to be at that, but we just kind of nosied our way in there. And that's kind of what I'm trying to do here, just trying to get our foot in the door wherever we can.
I want to say thank you for the presentation and I, 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 I liked the entire idea, like the, um, there's a, seems like a heavy, I guess, communication aspect to what you're doing, which is great. It's what the borough always, I feel like, um, it's good communication. I had some other events that you might want to think of, but like if you're tenting up, right? You're, you're like, like a, you, you pop up and table, right? That's kind of what you do. Like, um, the, the events, the theater, the Indiana theater, um, there's usually room in that lobby, uh, in the front and there's people that come in and out of there, uh, quite a bit. Um, and then all of our third Thursdays events, I feel like.
Staple at all those for the summer, we're going to be there.
But if you're kind of a one man show or two man show that are sort of rolling it around and you've, you've got time, anytime the, the, the I M C park is closed, right? Um, why don't we have our, our booth there saying, hey, we're, this is I M C borough, trying to get some information. And you're, you're, you know, a lot of them, you know, if we're able to, you know, like you said, nudge in on a lot of events, we have that space. It's being rented out all the time. People are coming in and out all the time. And people love doing those little interviews and things like that and getting your opinion. So, um, you know, popping up and I, I, you know, push in.
This, it does, it, it, it is a lot, but it is a lot, but yeah, like I said, it's a lot. But this is by no means all my work. I've been having a lot of help from Jeff and our consulting team. So we, we have the, the manpower to get it done by the end of the summer. Yeah. Any other questions about anything?
Other new business coming from the council.
Good job.
Thank you.